We're going to go ahead and kick off the five o'clock workshop. I've got silenced on them call from this ridiculous number. I got 502 local, so if we could all take our seats, we will, we will get rolling. There we go. I always forget that part. Okay, 502, we'll get started for the five o'clock city council workshop. Before we jump into citizens comments, just there was some confusion about the multiple workshops today, just for those that were not here, the three o'clock workshop was completed. We've got some guidance for the city as far as council's work plan. We discussed some CIP issues, so that was completed. Moving on, so for the five o'clock citizens comment, this is opportunity for members of the public suggest in addition to topics for discussion or to address topics of interest. With the presentation limited to three minutes, all speakers will conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking and will announce their name and address to be included in the minutes, please. State law prohibits the mayor and members of city council from commenting on any statement or engaging in dialogue without an appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the Texas open meetings law. So Ms. Wiseman, your first, as she's coming up, council and speakers, I will remind you, please get close to the microphone. We got messages from some residents that were watching the three o'clock session and indicated they were unable to hear again paid political announcement. Lappel mics are being worked on, so I know this thing is the bane of everybody's existence, and I hate it right here, but we're working on it. So please, if you're speaking tonight, if you can't hear yourself echoing, then you're probably not echoing, so yes, ma'am.
My name is Michelle Wiseman. I live at one Ridgewood Drive. Thank you guys so much for your time tonight, and thank you for all the time that you guys give to this city and hello to my fellow citizens. I want to bring up an issue down at Oakmont Park. There are donuts being made down there regularly after rains, and it's really destroying the beauty of the land down there. And I'm noticing that there's still scars from last year when donuts were made. So my concern is that two to three years. Thank you. Two to three years from now, we're not going to have the wildflowers. We're not going to have the grass. It's just going to be mud and dirt and the beautiful water. So I am suggesting that Parks and Rec Committee go down there and assess it and do some research. I don't know how easy it is to turn that soil and throw down some seed, and if that is the solution, but maybe make it part of their yearly cleanup. I'd love to hear back from Parks and Rec what a solution might be. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Stephen, go forth and do great things. Tammy Day, next up for us, please.
Hi, I'm Tammy Day. I live at 28 South Sherwood Drive. I've been a member of Morgan's Point for 11 years. I'm not here adversarially, but I'm here to advocate for some people in this room. When you look around this room, you see people missing, and that shakes me up. When we have people that have contacted other members of this community stating they are fearful to come to this meeting and speak because they believe they are going to be moved from a position in this community, I appreciate that as a social worker for 25 years in Bell County. City Council, I'm here tonight not just for myself and my family who has resided at NPR for 11 years, here to advocate for fair and equal treatment under the law. My expectation of the council is that when a disaster happens, an emergency meeting be called. Wouldn't each of you think that this is a disaster? Definition of disaster is to be found as a significant event that causes distress. It's causing me distress right now, seeing people in this room that have been removed from our community after tenure and over 15-plus years of unemployment. I'm asking city council to do their due diligence in investigating and being mindful. This is a requirement under federal law to uphold the equitable hiring practice and standards of law. Because as a business owner, it is my duty and responsibility to uphold employment laws, and please let this resonate for a moment. Hostile work environment and bullying, discrimination, equal opportunity, whistleblower law, abuse of power, toxic leadership, violations of six, Title VI and ADA laws, which right now, the live stream cannot be found by a majority of our citizens right now, and I spent 20 digging around for that live stream. My mother's on palliative care and can't make this meeting. She'd like to be here to speak, but I wanted her to be able to live stream it. And proper termination according against public law, adverse actions, nepotism and unfairing fair. And a city manager. Please look at the patterns that have changed in the culture and policy of our city government, and who is responsible for these changes? Does a city council meeting reflect a culture of praise and appreciation for our city employees with any out, without any adverse actions in their employee files? Living in a city where our long-term and reputable employees have been tossed out like a piece of trash is incomprehensible and embarrassing. Why, why were these decisions made by staff who had tenure? I won't talk about the other things because they're really not important. These people have families, and they're sitting in this room right now. Thank you, city council.
Thank you, ma'am. JoJo Guzman.
JoJo Guzman, 22 Will Run Drive. Council, mayor, staff, I appreciate you all, and I thank you for the opportunity to express my concern. As a resident of Morgan's Point Resort for over 30 years, I have witnessed city managers and drama come and go. And I genuinely care about our community. Until recently, I even own two homes in Morgan's Point Resort because I love this place and I love everything about it. As you all enter your special session for personnel today, I want to remind you that the council from previous minutes continuously praised on different occasions, because I looked back at every single minute that I could find, and there were occasions that, you know, different council members, whether they were a resident or whether praised the dedication of our employees, they gave praise of their hard work and their work ethic, and most of them are gone now. While it is true that we operate at an at-wheel employer, allowing you to dismiss employees for operate for any reason or no reason at all, it is essential to note that we cannot hide illegal or discriminative motives or terminations such as race, age, religion, disability, or retaliation, nor can you create a hostile work environment to pressure someone out of a position. I am afraid as a resident of Morgan's Point Resort that if it hasn't already happened, it will be happening, that we're going to start getting lawsuits. And that is sad to end up hearing. You know, even the financial implications for the city are significant. Potentially up to 200% of an annual salary for one person is being lost and no longer, that are no longer with us. We've lost more than one. Those costs encompass recruitment, training, lost productivity, low team morale, disruptions to business operations, and the loss of valuable knowledge and customer relationships these employees built with residents. Long-term employees offer a wealth of experience and foster the very relationships that our community currently is lacking. The absence of these expertise and state stability results and replacement costs that are much higher than anyone even truly realizes. And I, it just breaks my heart to hear this. I do want to end up concluding perception is, perception is an individual subjective interpretation of something. It is not a fact. However, perception can evolve into fact when it is backed by verified data and analysis. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Lynn Mylum.
Hey, JoJo, I gotta do something with this. Yeah, I know. Lynn Mylum, 28, Morgan's Point Boulevard. I'm going to read this because I know that's the time police are over there.
Lynn, yeah, there you go. There you go. Thank you.
Council, mayor, city manager, and the remaining staff, as a longtime resident and volunteer of Morgan's Point Resort, please wake up. The residents voted for you to set goals, voted for you to set goals and plans, and you selected a city manager to run the city to implement these goals. You did not hire a city manager to become a dictator and not keep oversight of our city. It hurts me to hear that some of the seniors have, they're afraid, because I had an octogenarian tell me today the same thing. She was afraid to come up here because she's afraid of what will happen to her. And that something like her water bill or her property or taxes, it won't be there in time, and she'll be, you know, persecuted. You have brush on the streets and area of the city that now well over a year with no end in sight as to when it will be picked up. You have roads with potholes, yet you're trying to tell the residents that you saved money. And no, you didn't save money, because if you have money and you have extra asphalt, you seal some more streets. You put some of that in a pothole. You don't make a employee parking lot that doesn't hold enough spaces for all the employees. That's not called employee parking lot. I'm a businesswoman. I own two businesses, and if you want employees to respect you, then you have to respect them first and foremost. You learn from your employees who've been around, not treat them as if you don't, they don't matter. You do not do what we are doing and clean house of all the employees who know about the financial system and do not think it won't be questioned, especially since the person who is in charge has an active lawsuit. Why is she also the assistant manager and HR director? No wonder the employees are going to the council to try and voice their concerns only to be turned down. The person you need to contact is the one they trust, but not the one that they are trying to, to file a complaint against. The assistant city manager says that if anyone says anything about city hall business or council to the council mayor or the citizens, they'll be fired. How is that okay? I have no confidence in the city manager, the assistant city manager, nor the interim city secretary have the best interest in Morgan's Point in mind. None of them live in our city. None of them seem to care about the residents, and none of them pay taxes here. We do. My biggest thing is, a few years ago, there was a thing called Home Rule, and they wanted to get it implanted, and the council themselves each picked two citizens. It was a council-picked venture. And the biggest thing that was complained to us went at the end, and what was the main thing wrong was because they did not want a city manager thing, yet that's what we have now. What happened? Y'all told me that we could do better.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving in to the regular agenda, discussion item 25063, discuss the fiscal year ending 2019 and 2020 audits. Briefly touched on those during the previous workshop. Dennis, if you want to.
Yes, mayor, thank you. Mayor, city council, the fiscal year in 2019, 2019 and 2020 audits, as we talked before, a couple of options that we have to, that we would like to suggest, and the two that have been passed around in years past is a compilation engagement that would basically take the financial records that we provide to the auditors, and they would take that information and create our financial statements for us. It doesn't, that doesn't mean they're going to test anything. In fact, clearly, they would not do any testing to prove up in certain aspects. It's really what we provide is what they consolidate into a report, financial reports, and that's the, that's pretty much the end project, product. The other option is to do what's a normal audit engagement like we're doing and we have done for the last couple of audits. That's another option. There are some concerns about 2019, I think specifically. Remember, I brought back the aging accounts receivable where they were, there was a couple hundred thousand dollar discrepancy. I'm not saying anything on the surface wrong. In time, an audit to that would very well reveal or perhaps reveal why we have such a large accounts receivable shoot up by, I think it was 267%. Very unusual, and I think that's probably about 200 and some odd thousand dollars. In all today, assuming, assuming we don't do anything, the draft report before you on the audit for 2023 actually has about $50,000 accounts receivable. So that's just going to grow, in my opinion, unless we go back and look at the 2019 and 2020 audits. Whether it was a good idea to skip over those years or not, doesn't really matter. We did. So now we've got to either go back and do the audits or go back and perhaps just do a compilation engagement to where the financials are done. In the end, neither one of them is going to help or hurt, I should say, our opportunity to apply for grants and what have you. So I think that's, that's the good news, that they'll be looking back at 25, excuse me, 24, and when fiscal year 25 closes, that, that would obviously be the next one that they would be looking at. So I don't think it's going to affect anything. Perhaps it would address the answers, perhaps, that we have an aging accounts receivable that's significantly higher, and it jumped in just a couple of years. It's really something you, you can think about for a while, give me some direction. I can just let me know, the mayor can let me know when you want to put it back on the agenda or let me know. But it definitely needs some attention so we know how to close that chapter of, of our financial audits.
I think I suggested at the workshop that we get the auditors to give us a quick side by side on these two years. What would a compilation give us? What are the pros and cons? What would an audit give us, pros and cons? Huge con, sucking a lot of staff time, but, and then the concept of, you know, the consequences of a compilation. I think they'd do that for us in a heartbeat because they do this all the time. So if you could come back with that information, I think we could be able to.
If that's the consensus of council, then I can, I can have them do that. I would like to not take them off what they're doing on 23. I want to get that done and out of the way because we're at the end game on that, but come right back behind that while they're working on the 24 and see if we can get them before you and have that discussion or perhaps remotely.
It might be, it might be a different group of people in the.
It might be.
Firm that does proposals and things, and they could just give us a, it probably isn't even our audit team that would do that.
Perhaps. I'm just saying, I'm looking for consensus if that's what you all want me to do, so I, we know. Basically, if we can just say, yes, that's the approach you all want to take to get the auditors in here or remotely, I guess, would work just as easy.
A report.
Yeah. Or do you want just a report in writing? I could just send that, and they could do that. Okay. Would that be okay with council? Okay, that's what we'll do.
A comment about that. I do think that when we, if we consider doing an audit, it will be tremendous amount of staff time, and I don't, personally, right up front, I don't know that it would be any benefit for us. If we did find some fraud or something in there in 2019, 20, those people are long gone, and so I don't know that it would really benefit us to do an audit, so.
To me, I tend to agree with you, but if there is something, and I've talked to Dennis about this, if they get into it and there's something questionable about that, it's a half a million dollars of a receivable. If there is something questionable about it, we will have to dig into those records. I do not want to write off a half a million dollars of accounts receivable on our watch. So I would want an independent firm to go back in and say, how, how did this happen? And is it recoverable at all, or is it a write-off? So I'm tending toward a compilation, but I want to leave the door open for, yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay. 25064 is the FY 2023 audit, the draft.
Well, mayor, city council draft, just to let you know, there's a couple of items. There's still one to run down that are, which is the reason why they didn't bring it and wrap it up. That's something that we hopefully, we hope it won't take too long, but they, as you saw on the statements, a lot of that stuff's already there, but we want to obviously give them that opportunity. So I'm, I'm assuming that it's going to come in between now and the next, the next meeting. If it does, and there's an opportunity for a, perhaps a special session, that's what we'll bring forward to you to ask you to go ahead and meet so we can deliver it to you. And obviously, the 2024 is the only thing left they can do short of going back to the 19 and 20 fiscal years. So really, this is, you've got what we have, and it's not a finished product.
Yeah, if I could just comment, I mean, I only looked at like the first four pages because it, you know, starts on page 19, so it's really just selected statements. It just looks like the groundwater storage is still in the general fund, needs to go in the water fund. The general fund is showing a million dollar deficit in the fund balance, and this is as of two years ago, and I certainly hope that is nowhere correct. So a couple of things like, you know, blew me out of the water, and I just wanted to know, when do you think the auditors will be able to wrap this up? And you just answered that, you just said probably by the, our next meeting.
Yeah, we thought it was going to be this meeting, but they sent us back saying, my understanding it was going to be, but it turned out that they still have a little bit more work, and those two items, I'm not really sure what they are and how long it's going to take, but if it's going to be longer, we'll figure that out and let you all know. And that's it, ma'am.
Trying to keep up. Okay, 25065, discussion object, or discussion item, proposed FY 26 budget.
Mayor, city council, this budget that's about to be proposed, we're going to hopefully have it to you next week. This budget's got, right now, roads is funded in it in the proposed budget. It does have a contractual obligations such as our, our mini pumper, that's that fire apparatus we got for, I think it was 250,000, roughly 240, something like that. So we had, contractually, we had to make two payments. We did one last, this year, and one for next, and that's all we'll have to do, and then that title will be released over to the city. So the mini pumper's in there. We have 75,000 for Anse Park. We've had a couple of calls. I've talked to some residents this week, and they really would like to see some movement in Anse Park. I've talked to the park committee members, council member Bishop on this, and we've met, and there is a plan forward to go ahead and, if we can, get a conceptual design from KPA, which will be our new engineering firm. We had coffee, but we're breaking that engagement, moving over, and you all went ahead and gave us permission to go ahead and engage KPA, which is a local firm. And what we'll do is we'll see if we can get a conceptual design of what that park could be in a phased approach, instead of trying to look for a four, three or four million dollar total project, maybe each year, we can build a portion of it based off of age groups and slowly work our way around that. And if we happen to get grants, which I fully expect the city will, we'll be able to go ahead and get a, basically a force multiplier to get that thing done faster than, than just phase it in based off of budgetary constraints. So that's one. Two, so that engineer will also give us the infrastructure that we need to be mindful of whenever we're, you know, putting in parks and, and trying to enhance the, the park overall. So I think Anse Park is something that we could start making some movement on. The, the conceptual design's the biggest thing we need to look at right now. And then aside from that, the Smith Park presentation that was given to council, I guess, month, month of June, that, from my understanding, was consensus, and the park committee members met, and they think that that could go forward. It's relatively low cost compared to any other option on any other park. It's something that also BJ thinks that we could probably do some of that stuff in-house, and if we can, that will even lower, I think it was 37 down to a lower number. So I think those are the two things, the Smith Park, what we can do internally, we will get that project moving, starting with this fiscal year that we have money set aside for, and get that conceptual design moving so we know how to use the dollars in the next fiscal year budget come on October. I think it will maximize the use and start showing some movement to the residents that live in the John A. Anse Park area that, that are concerned that they don't have a place for their kids to play. About the two we talked to, they felt that that was a reasonable approach, and they were thankful that, that you all are moving forward with it. The other thing is with this budget, so I talked about the park for 75,000 is what we're budgeting, and we have the mini pumper for 75,000. The proposed budget does include a 2% cost of living adjustment, and that's really with the road work that we budgeted in this proposed budget. That's, that is, I think the road CIP was roughly 440,000, which is what we're spending this year. I think the, those are really the only things that's going to be in the budget. No fund, whether it's Marina or anything else, will have, will be able to be moved forward until upon your concurrence, is get the 24 and the 25 audits in our hands, let you assess it, make sure you're comfortable with moving forward, and if so, we'll bring them based off the priority. We talked about in the workshop earlier that we need to get the reflow to the Marina. Definitely so. It's a core of engineer project. We got to get it moving, but you want to make sure, just like you just said, the ground storage tank, there's, there's a red flag. We need to make sure we know where we stand financially before we obligate the city moving forward. And I think that's what staff's working on, and I think that's what you are wanting. And I think if we could do that and just bring those priorities, and the reason why it's a priority to council after those audits are received, and then council will approve it and then say, yes, or give us consensus, this is the project we're ready to move forward on, then we'll bring back a budget amendment and we'll get that project running. I think it's a more prudent way that doesn't place any more burden on our finances until we know exactly where we're at. And really, there's, that's in all funds, except the general fund, and only one can go forward, from my perspective, if you all concur with it, is it does have, it's backed by tax revenue. So we took the, remember last year, the debt dropped, or this year, the debt dropped off, and that, this next fiscal year, that makes your maintenance and operation go up a little bit to add more revenue, same tax rate as last year, but it gives us more revenue to work in the maintenance and operation, not on the debt side. So that's good news there. And I think.
So you are proposing a budget with a flat tax rate this year, 25, 26. That's the first I've heard that.
Flat tax rate?
The same as last year.
It's going to be the same, the 62, yeah, 6253. Yeah, that's what we're recommending. We'll provide all the additional information that's required, but I do, for the other taxes, no new revenue, the voter approval rate and things like that, we'll have that as well. But yeah, I think if we maintain it, the road program should be able to go forward, and I, I think these other two minor things, being the mini pumper, it's contractual, it needs to be done either way regardless, and the park and the cost of living adjustment. And keep in mind, the cost CPI right now is at 2.7, which we're not getting that. So the employees will be losing some ground this year, but if, once we get our, our house in order, there's nothing to say that, that council can't revisit it mid-year and say, let's look at that, that other point seven and see where we're at. But really, it's, it's because of where we're at, trying to figure out exactly how much money's in the fund balance or the working capital for these, for these, for these funds, I think it's better to go ahead and just be a little bit more, slow our walk a little bit more. We've actually done that with some projects this year. We talked earlier about the sewer list station. It didn't go down because we didn't, we reevaluated, and we found another path forward that's better. But there's other projects that we could have moved forward with based off of the adopted budget, but I, I think you all have already made it clear that the audits and the financial stability and sustainability is more important right now to make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves and regret it later. And based off that direction, that's what this proposed budget does.
Yeah, and right now, we don't have meaningful financial information to be able to make meaningful key decisions for the city.
You need the end of year fiscal year end audits.
Balances. We've got to know what's in. Got to know what's in our fund balances and, yeah.
And it's, it's something that, in part, we'll use, obviously, the money and revenue that we have. But with those audits, you really open the doors to some other opportunities that you've never been able to use for seven years, I guess, five years or better, to the magnitude we're talking. It's much more promising than anything else. And for example, if we can get those, for example, City BG funding, let's say it's 750. If, if it's, if it's got to be targeted to the low to moderate income area of the city, then that money that you have set aside, because you have to spend all those dollars where the guidelines are called for. But this extra money that we're setting aside now can be a force multiplier to that, and we can get much more done. And so that's the kind of stuff, I think, having those audits behind us and having them to bring before those, those federal agencies, it can make a big difference. And don't forget, water, it's a big thing. Drainage is a huge thing as well. We've got challenges in both, and it's not anyone's fault. But if, if we're going to deal with it, we got to deal with it. And that's what we're trying to do.
I have one more question. So the rate will be, remain the same. But didn't the Texas Legislature, aren't they putting before the voters an additional homestead exemption in November? Or moving from 100 to 140? And is that, how will that impact us?
The exemptions that they provided us was at that time by the Belcany appraisal district. That's all we have to go on, because they have all of them there.
Or did they use 140?
I don't know what they used. I really don't know. But what they provided at that time was what the current law required, I'm sure of that. But I don't know the answer to your question. I'd have to find that out.
I think last year, the number they provided us was, was before the vote, or maybe it was two years ago, before the vote, but they anticipated the voters were going to vote. And so they gave us the lower number. So I guess we just need to know that, and how that will impact us.
Well, the.
And the disabled vets.
Well, I've got that in there, yeah.
Also.
The budget actually goes into what, what, obviously, the revenue for the velorum that we got, we're planning to receive, the taxes. But it also goes into the exemptions, not, not all the exemptions, but basically what the exemptions are costing us. I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's like 91 million dollars. But there's over 415,000, or I'll say over 400,000 in exemptions, disabled veterans exemption, for example, that the city won't receive any revenue. But we, we may pick up like 131,000 in extra revenue from taxes, but it's offset significantly by that 400,000, and it's an important thing. Veterans will tell you that, and I think many, those, those taxpayers would say the same thing. But the reality is, there's nothing coming back from the state that says, hey, smaller cities. Now, larger cities next to military installation, they can get that, those dollars. But it's not necessarily something that we're going to get for Morgan's Point Resort and other cities that are not adjacent to one.
Right.
But it, it is something that's slowly chipping away, and it's one of those unfunded mandates the state implemented.
Have to manage around it until it's changed.
We do, we do. And so, but right now, there's no reason to raise the rate other than what we used last year. The revenues and expenses, because we don't have a good read. Remember, we had a lot of challenges, because some of the, the expenses for last year were rolled over to this fiscal year for a couple of months. We've been backing that out, so that's good news. But there are still some concerns about the revenue hitting the wrong accounts as well. That's why waiting and letting this settle before we go into the many major project. Roads, yes, there's 440,000, but we don't want to touch that until the summer. Or we could do it sooner, depending on how the weather and what have you. So there are other options there as well. But that's something to think about. But yes, this budget is very, very conservative in a lot of ways, just to let that process occur.
Do you have a time estimate of when you think you're going to call us back together?
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah, we need to, what we need to do is to go deliver the proposed budget. And then we need to also have the preliminary tax rate basically called, and a public hearing for that. And then settle that. And then we also need to schedule a public hearing to adopt the rate moving forward. So there, there's little things that, that need to be done. But I think next week will be the week, and I think everybody's going to be here, except you, but you can, we can remote in, and we're just going to have four, you know, people here, for sure. And I think that's it on that one.
Okay, council, anything else? Okay, next up is 25066, discuss staggered terms. Staggered terms were discussed previously. And tonight is a night where, in regular session, we will draw straws to determine who is essentially going to be running for reelection again in the April election, I believe is when it is. Spoke with Neil, and that's when all that will take place. So in the interest of time, and unless there's anything specific that we need to address on that, questions or anything, we'll move on, and we will take care.
I just didn't understand what was put in our packet. But we can discuss it at the regular meeting.
Yeah, I did, my, and as I was sitting here getting these, there's a couple little flip flops. I missed a couple of things that I'm going to clean up with Neil during the break to make sure that we got our ducks in a row. Some of them are just typos, probably the same thing.
Oh, okay. I was confused.
Yeah, yeah. I, I missed that completely. And I'll cover that with the city manager and Neil, like I said, on the break, and make sure that, you know, it's probably, we'll probably just have to adopt the ordinances with, with some, some changes, which we'll, we'll take care of that in. So if there's nothing else on staggered terms, we'll move on to 25066, P&amp;Z recommendation, adding the term maybe to section 3.0331. Good evening, sir.
All right, I believe in your packets. You do have a, just a small wording change. We, we will be coming back, just so you'll know. We're coming back to chapter 3, 6, and 14. We gave you all a clean copy last time, but we did not give you the edits that Mike had put in place. I'm trying to get that back to you, so you'll be able to see the edits, see the clean copy, and then see if we can move forward with those changes. This one particular change came up at the last city council meeting, when we were talking about the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And at that point in time, I think the consensus was, city council was going to handle those instead of setting up a new board. When P&amp;Z reviewed this one, we looked back and said, okay, in the future, if there is a housing appeals board that needs to be set up, do we want to remove this from our ordinance, or leave it in and be permissive? That's why we virtually just put that wording in whereby it does say today, there is hereby established to change the is hereby to may be. That would keep it permissive, would allow city council at some other point in time, or P&amp;Z as well, to implement that if it was what everybody wanted at that time. So that's this only little piece right now, even though the other will come back at our next meeting.
Do we want to clarify that I just wrote down, in lieu of a separate board, council will serve as the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals to avoid any question about if we don't have it, we do have it, it's just city council at this point?
Right. We could do that, sure.
Okay. I think that might just be, might clarify.
Okay. That was, that was the only item I had on that particular agenda item. And Jimbo, if you want me to go ahead and go to 068?
Yes, sir. If you would, please. As long as, no additional comments or questions on 067. Just so the public knows, 25068 is a declaration of variance for a carport at 160 Lake Forest.
Right. And Nadia, could we hand out those? They do have them right now? Okay, great. All right. On this particular one, planning and zoning reviewed all of the requests. You'll see, let me get to my summary on that one. Here we go. Okay, the agenda item on this one was to request and build a carport at 160 Lake Forest Drive in Morgan's Point Resort. The variance to build a carport that would extend 18 feet from their resident garage. The resident has medical issues and would like coverage. We're making frequent trips to and from, treatment requirements. Planning and zoning discussed that the variance would extend past the front bill lines of the property. Residents indicated they would prefer stationary harsh weather covering to avoid wearing out their garage door during the frequent trips that would be required. On our public notification input, we did hold a public hearing on June 24th of this year. There was no public input and no one present from the owner's resident at that point. There were no residents present at our July 22nd planning and zoning meeting. And the residents had agreed to a FaceTime session with planning and zoning. However, none was set up for our July meeting. It just didn't happen. So our recommendation right now is that we voted 5-0 that P&amp;Z would deny the request based on the extension of the carport past the front bill lines and the alternate use of their garage, which we understand is available. They just did not want to wear that garage door out by their coming and going. So side port, a side port, carport was discussed with concerns about traffic site limitations for the corner lot. In addition, a covered sidewalk to the home and carport pad would be required to limit exposure to the, the harsh weather. So our action here is after denial of requests by planning and zoning, was recommended to move requests forward to city council for consideration. So I'll answer any questions y'all might have on that right now.
I had a bunch of questions. I sent you an email, and you answered them all. Thank you.
Thanks, sure.
Council, anybody else? Okay, and that is an action item on the regular session. So thank you, sir, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, council, if there's no objections, what I would like to do is postpone the finance director update, the city manager update, and executive session until the tail end of our regular session, just in the interest of time. I don't want to get into any of these discussions and then have to push the pause button and try to reset. Obviously, we have residents here this evening. So if there's no objection, what I would like to do is come out of the workshop at, we've got 17:45. We will reconvene back into the workshop for those three items following the regular session. If there are no objections. Okay. Thank you very much.